And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And for those of you out there in TV land and you're looking at like is my camera deceiving me? Why is Ralph sitting in the middle? We need a motion on the floor to, for this day and this day only, appointing presiding, what's the official term? Presiding Officer. Regular roll call, and then we'll explain everyone's absence.
Ms. Evans, Mr. Parrish, Mr. Velardo.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes, here.
And do we have a motion to excuse our mayor and vice mayor due to Lisa had a much long and much deserved vacation already planned? She and Christopher did not confer that he ended up, he's now the proud father of twins, correct? Right, that were, that were born just the other day, so can we have a motion to excuse those two?
Motion to excuse.
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes. Okay. Now, we need a motion to open a public hearing, I believe, regarding the proposed amendments to the city charter. This will be the first of two different public hearings. We've got a bunch of housekeeping items really, and some other more significant proposed changes that we're here to discuss. And I'll turn this over to our law director, I believe, at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Yeah, you tell me whatever you want.
Yeah, there you go, well, not in public. As we described in the committee meeting last month, we proposed charter changes that would, I think, in looking at other charter municipalities in the area, that I think just are good government, and they make it more efficient, and they allow you, I think, more flexibility, which is the whole point of being a limited, or being a home room municipality, to be able to govern in a way that reflects the needs of your citizens, and I think that's what this council is doing and looking at, and I think these are, these are good ideas. Just briefly, again, I'll go, I'll go through some of these, some of these are language, and making sure we have gender neutral terms, those are.
Not to interrupt, these were all available, just so the public is aware, these were all available, available on our website, so anyone who can go to the city's website and easily see these changes, so this is nothing that you've got to dig for, these are very readily available.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Velardo, and it had been so for a month, at least, so after we had that, so yes, this is, the intent is to be very transparent here and to get people's support for these. So qualifications for council, right now, council members only need to be residents for at least 90 days, we would change that to a year. The terms of office, right now, start January 1, we moved that to December 1 to shorten that quote unquote lame duck period, you know, there's a constitutional precedent, you know, back in the day, the president didn't take office until March, that's now November, or sorry, that's now January, so we just think that makes sense. Executive session, we would just align that with Ohio law, which I think also makes sense. With respect to the manager, the manager would, who by the way, is already company buddy, continue to, well, anyway, he complies with the charter. The point is, most charters now have removed this residential requirement, I think that's a good idea as well, you don't want to limit the particular person you hire to having to be a resident, I understand the benefits to that, that's not a, to me, it makes more sense to pull it out, and that's why we've suggested that. We also, as a manager form of government, we're making it very clear that council can remove him or her with two thirds vote of council, and not go through a bunch of process, we think that's a good idea, and in fairness, so does, so does Benjamin, and also the same with your law director, by the way, if you don't like what I'm doing, then you should remove me and not have to go through a lot of process, that's just not the kind, that's not what the position entails. With respect to the directors of finance, and all the other departments, we are making them subject to the manager's approval, and they already hired, and already has a hiring authority, he would also have the terminating authority as opposed to two thirds vote of legal counsel, that aligns, by the way, changing that aligns with most other city manager form of governments, whoever have the authority to hire has the authority to fire, and so we're aligning with most other manager form of governments in that regard. As you go to our purchases and contracts, there's something under 1108 under investment of funds, that the manager has that responsibility, as opposed to director of finance, at the end of the day, the manager is responsible for all employees under the charter, it makes sense to us to just align that and have the manager make the directive to whomever he or she decides to, to make those particular investments through the direction of council. Under the purchases and contracts, here's another change, right now, any expenditure that is in excess of $40,000, if it's not a professional or expert personal service, must be bid, right now, the state code amount is $75,000, it's actually 78 and change, it works up now by statutory change, so we say the minimum amount required by general law, so we would align that with general law, and that aligns with a lot of other charters that I'm aware with, aware of, and so we would change that unless otherwise provided by ordinance, so council could always, in an individual situation, change that, but the default would be the general amount by law. The many, the, right now, the manager has a $7,500 spending limit, we would change that to the minimum bidding amount required by law, which would be that $75,000 number, and the same thing for bidding modifications, or, I'm sorry, contract modifications. And the only other thing that really is of substance is, resolutions could be proposed by council, they would not have to be done by committee, right now, you have to go through committee, which either means a committee of the whole, or it means the special committees that council is operated, frankly, that's council's choice, I, as a, as a, as an observer, just generally of 28 years, but also as a law director and solicitor in seven other jurisdictions, this is inefficient, it creates additional meetings, it creates timing problems, it also creates potential problems whereby the committee could say, no, we don't want it, and since there's only three people on the committee, you could have three people preventing something from coming on the agenda, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, so we just strike that, it all has to come in front of you, and you can propose it during the meeting, and I think that makes sense. You know, publication of ordinances, we do that already on the municipality's webpage, and so Ms. Bain does a nice job of that, and essentially, that is it for the substantive change, again, there's some cleanups, as I mentioned earlier, so, Mr. Presiding Officer, thank you.
Thank you, and before I get started, do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, do we have any comments from council about all these proposed changes? Inputs? The only thing, and I've, that I have paused to, and again, I'm one person, one vote, and you know, you can all disagree with me, and I've talked to city manager Gunnerson about this, is that spending authority? One of the things that I think we all hold very true when we were elected here is the budget, is spending the money, and it's nothing against the city manager today, but once we change this, every city manager from there on, so 25 years from now, when Benjamin decides to hang up his hat here in the city of Milford, you are at that cap, our law director will still be here. That is the only thing that really I pause with, is to give them the authority up to 75,000, and it's actually, it's a, it's a moving figure.
It's a moving up 3%.
Yeah, it's a moving figure, that personally, I would rather see that be a number that is lower than that threshold, and is that, it still gives him the ability to make some decisions, I do believe $7,500 is too low, but I'm not comfortable going to 75,000 plus at this time, but again, that's just my opinion, and I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Presiding Officer, just to, one thing, I know that we've had maintained comments on the website, the only comment that I'm aware of, Ms. Bain, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there was a comment about a zoning code change, as I indicated, to council, that is a, that is not a charter, appreciate the question, that is not a charter change, if that individual, I think, recommended some kind of zoning change, and that already exists, that's not a charter issue, if that person advocates that, they can go through the zoning process, it's already part of the code of ordinances, that would not require a charter change, and it's not part of what we're doing here, so I just wanted to make that clear, because that's, I'm aware, that's the only comment that's been submitted, correct?
Yeah, that's, I have not seen anything else.
And the last time that we put the charter revision on the ballot was?
Ten years ago, I think?
Twenty twenty-two, it's before, twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, yeah.
Okay.
Just, I, at that time, my impression of citizens was they were unaware of it, so please be aware, and are very transparent, and it's very easy to get the information, and if you have any questions, let us know.
And that was my point, Ms. Cooper, that this council, in my opinion, has done a very good job being transparent about, is soliciting comments, and I wanted it for the record, there's one person here, and we've had one comment, so I know council's not asking me, nor, nor does council need any defense in this regard, but I get a little defensive for you when people suggest that you're not transparent, and you haven't solicited comments, when we've had two.
Well, and I also think we need to be, we somehow relay to the community, because to Ms. Cooper's point, that when you go to that ballot box, and if you don't know exactly what it is, your tendency is to vote no, so your tendency is to vote no, so whatever, and I know we as council members, as we sit up there, we're not going to advocate how people need to vote or whatever, we're going to give them all the information, but whether there's a subset of people who are willing to be spearheaded, if we're going to effectively change this, there needs to be some real community involvement, to your point, to get that out, because we can give all the information and be as transparent as possible, but at the end of the day, I believe that's what happened last time, is people truly didn't think that they understood it, therefore, they voted no. And, and they were actually less changes than what we're proposing today, we were just trying to clean up language back then, if I recall right, so anyway, so seeing no other comments, questions, so do we need a motion to close the, so we need a motion to close the public, first public hearing, again, there will be another one on August 15th, is that?
July 15th.
July 15th, yeah, July, get my months, July 15th, that'll be a second reading, once that occurs, correct, wrong, and then we will take a vote on July 15th to accept the changes as proposed here, and then it will be sent to the board of elections to be certified, and then would be on your November ballot.
And another point on transparency, Mr. Velardo, as part of the constitutional requirement, the Ohio constitutional requirement, we must send a copy of the changes to every elector in, in Milford, so they will also get a copy at least 30 days before the election in November.
So we will do everything possible to communicate, to, to make sure that information's out there, and hopefully our wonderful voters in this community take the time to understand what they're voting for, and get educated, so. With that being said, we will move, oh wait, we need a motion, did we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
To close.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we need approval of the May 20th at council, do I have a motion for any additions or corrections, and if not, a motion to accept?
Motion to accept, second.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
All right, that moves this to financial statements, my favorite. We need a motion to adopt, unless anyone has any questions or whatever, to adopt the April 2025 financial report, and can we do this together and receive the, or do we have to do it separately?
I don't have a problem doing both.
And then we'll also have a, in that same motion that we've all received, for review, the May 2025 financial report.
If I may, can I just, before you vote on this, as it relates to the May financial report, because of how the meetings are aligned, you'll adopt it in July, you'll simultaneously receive the June financial report, just because of how the meetings line up. The other thing I wanted to point out is, in the May financial report, I know you're not voting on it, but just to be upfront, we are about $700,000, $800,000 short on our revenues, because we internally figured out that when we created the most recent JED, all of our income taxes were going to that new account through Rita, not just the JED revenues, so we realized the mistake, we adapted quickly, and kudos to the finance department, we have corrected that mistake, and now the revenues are, they're back in our account and properly, they're being handled properly, but I just wanted to bring some awareness to that.
And then, Ms. May, will the finance, our investments change, or are they in the process, I noticed they're still with their old investment company.
Yeah, so we're currently working through the process, I believe we are aiming for the 20th for this to be finalized, for the funds to be transferred from Red Tree to Star Ohio, so after the 20th, that will be complete.
All right, okay, with that.
Motion to adopt.
And we've got.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
With that, we're moving, right, any public comments, anybody from the public like to speak? All right, moving on to city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Officer. First on the list, the finance director hiring panel, over the last couple weeks, we've held numerous interviews for the finance director position, I suspect that within the next couple weeks, we'll be making a decision on the next steps. Simultaneously, we've been holding interviews for an opening at the service department, we are happy to welcome Mr. John Lee Hart to the team, he's a local Milford resident, carries a great attitude, very knowledgeable, and, and the, the team is, really enjoys working with him, so I, I'm happy to the team, excellent addition to our team. The city has completed the first of the transition process as it relates to our IT consultant, we no longer have E Technologies, we now have ROI Technologies, ROI is a local company, we've got a resident, the, one of the owners, he lives in our backyard, the transition has been pretty successful, we're now evaluating internal needs, creating a replacement schedule, and establishing a five-year plan as it relates to the IT needs, so more to come on that. Staff has attended several events, including a ribbon cutting at Serenity on Main Street, Ms. Bain and I attended the Center for Local Government Effective Communication Training Luncheon, and, as well as the Memorial Day Parade. City staff held a meeting with our city lobbyists to discuss economic development projects, upcoming grants, income and property tax legislation, as well as the qualified immunity legislation that's being proposed, or pushes to, to eliminate that. I did want to bring attention to the July 15th meeting, that's a pretty, pretty important meeting for us, we'll be dedicating council chambers to Mr. Mike Manier, Park Pay USA is going to do a presentation on downtown parking, and give council sort of a, this is what it would look like if, if we implemented something like that. Lastly, I wanted to remind the citizens that on July 19th, being Thursday, city offices will be closed in honor of Juneteenth, and certainly, to attend the farmer's market, my understanding is, for the rest of the farmer's markets, for the rest of the year, there'll be music at every one of them, so it continues to expand, we've got some great vendors, and concludes my report.
Thank you, somebody was talking over here, I apologize, he was distracting me.
Do I need to repeat it?
No, but we, that brings me, see, look at that, he's already up there, I, just in time for the police, what brings you up here today, my good sir?
Mr. Presiding Officer, I don't have a report for you, as it's, I am pleased to announce. Also want to let you know some good news, if I haven't already, and I don't think I have, my only part-time employee, administrative officer Jeff Haggie, one of his many responsibilities is actively pursuing grants, and he has secured two grants so far this year, one will reimburse us $29,000 towards the, if you recall, one of the capital improvement projects I had for this year was updating and upgrading our body worn cameras, so they're going to reimburse us $29,000 for that, that'll be coming sometime in the fall, we also will be getting reimbursed for four of our Flock cameras through another grant, so just over $41,000 in grants so far this year, thanks to the hard work of Jeff Haggie.
And how many Flock cameras do we have now?
That's a good question, we, we're only 88% deployed right now, we still have, I think, one left, we have nine Flock cameras, that's the LPRs, but we have three pan tilt zooms that work in conjunction with those, so in theory, the way that, they work together is, if we get a Flock hit, maybe a stolen car, or a missing person on one, say, on, on Main Street, when they get down to the five-point intersection, the other pan tilt zoom would, would let us know which way it went, so we could try to intercept that.
Okay.
So 12 cameras, nine of which are LPRs.
Okay.
Is that what that solar panel looks like with the, okay.
Yes.
I always wonder, I just noticed that the other day.
Some of them can be powered solarly, and some cannot, but so, yeah, that's probably what you've seen.
Fantastic.
Yeah, great news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, fire and EMS report, Chief Baird. Fresh off the Mediterranean, or somewhere, I believe?
Something like that.
Yeah.
Thrilled to be back.
Your sea legs?
Great time, thanks for asking me, it was a good time, couple interesting runs today, the first one was a young, young female became basically impaled on a piece of reinforcement bar behind the Little Miami Brewing Company today, turned into a, a bit of a situation, had to do quite a bit of work to get her freed, but fortunately, it appears to be a fairly minor injury.
Oh, wow.
And was transported down to Children's for treatment, so pretty, pretty positive work there, then later in the day, had a vehicle run into one of the brick columns in front of, or adjacent to Servati in the Milford Shopping Center, appears to have been caused by a medical emergency, and not sure of her status right now, but the building did receive some, or the column did receive some damage, our building department checked on it, there was no interruption in business after that. On that particular run, there were a number of Good Samaritans on the scene there that jumped into play, one of them was actually, ended up being injured trying to get into the vehicle to give aid, and was treated and released at the scene by Miami Township's medic unit, but a lot of Good Samaritans right there at that time, and they did a great job, especially one in particular, I didn't catch names, but crawled in the car and was keeping her airway open, if you will, while, as we were responding, happened very quickly, so kudos to those, those Good Samaritans that were on the scene there. And just a few other things, want to congratulate a few cert, new certified people, Eric Nos, on his firefighter two transition class passed that, Eric's one of our part-time employees, our volunteer, well, now part-time employee, Craig Russell, obtained both his basic EMT and his swift water rescue training certification recently, as well as career firefighter, paramedic Carly Egamire passed her fire safety inspector class, so a lot of, a lot of good, a lot of good training, a lot of good certifications in the last few weeks. I want to make you aware of the, of a grant that we received a little while back, and in partnership with the firefighters' club, we were able to purchase, to replace all of our hazardous gas detection meters with new equipment, we, the equipment that we had was starting to show its age, becoming a little bit more problematic to maintain, and we partnered with Duke Energy, Duke provided a $2,500 grant from its, from its charity, and the firefighters' club contributed the rest of the, up to the $5,200 project, and that's money that the, the men and women of the fire department and the club members earned over the summer last year, working at Sparks in the Park, and the different festivals selling water, and walking tacos, and everything else, so we're really glad to have that, glad to have that. A lot of PR details, I'm not going to take up much of your, more of your time, I want to acknowledge the fact that, and Chief Mills and our department have partnered for several years on the Milford Miami Township Addiction Response Team, that was a grant-funded program that was instituted at the height of the issues, and that funding has run out as of the end of June, I think it's been a great program, I'm looking forward to seeing the final closeout report, but I do sincerely feel like that the work that the Milford and Miami Township first responders did, along with the, the county officials, and the coaches, or the, I guess they were coaches, that's probably not the right word, but the people from the county that went out, who were all, almost all recovered, who had walked the, walked the walk in their work, I think they saved lives along the way, they responded after drug overdose emergencies and whatever, and provided resources to hopefully get past the addiction and recover, and so that program, as it is currently, is coming into an end at the end of June, it's going to continue on, on a referral basis, in other words, if we get a referral from the county, Jamie's officers and mine, as well as the Miami Township side, will send people out on a case-by-case basis and check in on, so it's not going away completely, it's just the grant-funded portion, and the big, every Tuesday, I think it was, they went out and did the, and did their, their visits, that's all coming, coming to a close, so great program, I'm looking forward to the final report on that, which I'll be glad, Jamie, I want, will share that with you. And that's really all I have, do you have any questions for the fire department?
If I can take a point of personal privilege, does anyone have? I, I truly want to thank Chief Baird and Chief Mills for that matter, I had the privilege of retiring from the fire service, and he made an extremely, very humbling post, so I just wanted to thank you personally, I got my start in the Milford Community Fire Department, long before you were born, but, you know, yeah, yeah, probably, but anyway, but, I just want to thank you, that was very humbling, and I was truly honored that you did that, and on the note of the addiction response, I had the, I don't know if I should say the privilege, but I, I was part of the initial group.
I think it's a privilege.
It was a privilege to be a part of that initial group, and what a difference, you know, when we first started, we had a lot of naysayers, but as that program evolved, it was impressive to see the amount of people, and, and again, if it's one out of 10, three out of 10, whatever it is, it, it made a difference, it truly was an extremely effective program. The other thing that was extremely unique about it, and we weren't the only two communities that did it, but the collaboration between Milford and Miami Township folks, that they would take opposite Tuesdays and, or fill in each other, but it was just a, a true sharing of resources, sharing, sharing of a true mission to do better for people, and so I applaud your folks, I know Chief Miles was, Miller was very actively involved in that, I know a lot of others, so I truly believe that that program was effective, and, you know, and hopefully, on a need be basis, it'll still be there, so, thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Certainly. Jamie, that thank you is for you too, brother, thank you. Okay, council comments?
Forgot manager's report here, July 3rd, Sparks in the Park.
Okay.
Seven to 10, Riverside, and Five Points Landing.
Oh, and you're selling, right, your, the firefighters' club?
Fire department will be selling sodas, American Legion will have adult beverages.
And we have a band, right, we don't have a band that starts at seven-ish?
Seven.
Seven-ish?
There's music at both locations, I know.
Oh, there is music at both locations?
Yes.
Is that you singing karaoke by chance? Is that you singing karaoke by chance?
Absolutely not. You don't want that.
And some food options, too.
And it really is. I've been to both places, and there is not a bad spot. If you'd like to be down at Ground Zero and be down there, it truly is. It's, I think it's an event that continues to grow, and it's really exciting to see the community come together and to be able to host it in two different locations. So there probably someone in this room is going to agree or disagree with me. I think we need to revisit the sound ordinance. I know we've talked about it from time to time, that we've had conversations with the, it's basically the distillery's outside music. And I happen to be driving around at 10 o'clock on Saturday night. I happen to see a fine resident now talking to a police officer, and I stopped, and I just listened. And it is, it's nothing that I think any of us would want to have to hear that night. I will never think that decibel is the right way to go, but I think we need to revisit the time at a minimum. I think we need to revisit. And I'm not mistaken, it's 11 o'clock at this moment. I thought that we'd had some conversations, they were going to make some changes up there, either put up some baffling, but you could very distinctly hear that up on Mill Street, on Mountain Street, all the way up on Cleveland. I didn't go up on Garfield, but it's certainly something that I think we need to readdress and reevaluate. And if they're not willing to make the changes that need to be made, because my understanding, and maybe you guys can all correct me, when that building was first approved, I don't believe the ban issue was ever part of that initial approval. And, you know, and I'm not putting you on the spot, but when that went through planning, went through all that, I don't believe entertainment on that top was part of that approval. So with that being said, I just feel very strongly that we, as council, need to readdress it at a minimum and to, if the businesses are not willing to, you know, make their changes, then I think we are responsible to make those changes. I know that Little Miami went through a lot of things, and they made some incredible changes to, you know, and those weren't even residents that we were affecting back then. So this is not the first time this comes up. I'm all about making sure we have a very prosperous downtown. I know what that does to this community, I know, but I think there should be some sort of happy medium. So, anyway.
Do we have something where, what those changes are supposed to be, written anywhere? Or was it more verbal?
Well, unfortunately, we can't speak for, I know the mayor and a previous person who sat in that seat had had numerous conversations, and maybe it just warrants another conversation. My understanding, they were going to put up a baffle?
Some sort of sound, something to keep it?
Right, to keep it from, you know, and again, I could see clearly from that interview, you can see the ban, so I know that there was nothing up. But whether they put up sound barrier walls or just something that muffles, and barring that, is, I know other communities have gone through this, where they ended up restricting the hours even greater. You know, I unfortunately think that that's a last resort, but I do believe that's something that we, as council, should address.
So I have a question for the law director. The way our sound ordinance is, it's time, and as long as they're done by 11 o'clock, legally, they're compliant. I think it's hard to...
I'm pretty sure that's what I...
I'm not used to...
Yeah.
I think, I realize, and I can hear it from my house.
Yeah.
And personally, it doesn't bother me. I sleep with the windows open, I mean, I get it, it doesn't bother me personally. But I think it's hard to single out one business when technically they are being compliant.
And the ordinances today, they are.
Right.
If you could tell me that they were allowed to do that in the first place.
Well, but they're compliant with the law, to the best of my knowledge.
The sound, but my point is, are they compliant with, you know, was that ever an approved outdoor space for music?
Well, and it doesn't have to be, because I don't recall that.
Yeah, yeah.
So the sound ordinance, if I may interrupt, it says in the River District, after 10:00 PM, Sunday through Wednesday, after 11:00 PM on Thursday, and after 12:00 AM on Friday and Saturday.
Thank you.
And this was...
Correct.
Right.
That came up, I thought we amended that again since 2020. Maybe we have.
We discussed it, I'm sure, but I don't know.
I would just like us to revisit it and to see if there isn't some sort of happy medium, if we could.
And to, thank you, Mr. Gunderson, and Mr. Presiding Officer, Mr. Price, this provision applies only in the River District.
Right. So, all right.
Thank you.
Anyway, that's all I got. So that moves us, any other comments? That moves us to the agenda, and we need a motion. Do we close this meeting, or just?
Yeah, close and open the committee as a whole.
Close our regular council meeting and open up the committee as a whole meeting.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
That call, or roll call.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
Do I have to even say this? Does anyone in the public like to make a comment?
Another reason to change the charter.
You're the public. Okay, let's, items referred to committee as a whole, let's see. We need, we need the, oh, regarding the approval, the editing inclusion of ordinances as parts of the various code, of the codified ordinances of Milford, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Is that for you there, my good sir?
Yes, thank you. Pretty straightforward ordinance. This is, this has to do with ordinances that were amended or added between October 17th, 2023, and March 18th, 2025. What this allows us to do is to edit the codified ordinances and make the needed changes. So anything that's amended or added will be added to our codified ordinances to keep it up to date. And there's a list provided in the ordinance itself as it relates to which ordinances were amended or added.
Does anyone have any comments about any of these?
No.
Ordinances, all right. Drafting ordinance, amending for the amendment of the editing and inclusion of these ordinances.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, that, our next item on the committee is the non-binding term sheet, basically, for the FC Cincinnati mini pitch, in discussion thereof. City Manager Gunderson.
Thank you. So what I would like to do is, I would like to walk through the facts here, discuss what is being presented, and then provide my recommendation hereafter. Several conversations have been had with FC Cincinnati, as well as city staff prior to my time and then while I've been here, regarding the idea of having an FC mini pitch within the city of Milford. We met with FC Cincinnati, as well as Moats, who would be actually conducting the construction of the mini pitch. And it was determined that Riverside 2 was the most appropriate location for that mini pitch, and that is reflected in an aerial map provided in the packet with the green rectangle. Once it was determined what that would look like, they went through the necessary due diligence to determine if the feasibility, and then proposed a MOU in the form of a non-binding term sheet. What was presented to me was that of the city of Milford would cover minor costs, so if there's sticks in the mini pitch, if there's leaves, if there's any sort of minor damage to the mini pitch itself, we would cover that. The FC Cincinnati Foundation would then cover the larger costs. Once we, if you read through it, what is really being proposed is FC Cincinnati covers the first-year costs. So anything that goes wrong, they cover those larger costs. But after that, the city then assumes the responsibility of those maintenance costs through the lifespan, the useful life of that project. Based off of what the conversations have been with all of the relevant parties, the useful life is no shorter than five years and no more than 10 years. They usually focus a six to 10-year lifespan. There is warranties on all of the project itself, all of the equipment associated with that, for one year, but after that, the warranties expire. So that is me putting the facts out there. Once I received this MOU, that there was a misunderstanding as to how those maintenance responsibilities are handled amongst the parties. So I've got one, or I guess a few recommendations. This is a non-binding sheet, but in my opinion, I interpret it no different than a PUD. You get it right from the start. There is a contract that would follow this, that would, you know, make it binding, for the lack of better words. In my personal opinion, once again, there is either a disconnect or a misunderstanding in terms of those responsibilities. In my opinion, I think we either table this and figure this out before voting, because this is not what my understanding, as well as the mayor's understanding, was of how this worked. Or we take the approach of, there's a lifespan of, you know, they say, on average, six to 10 years. If they cover the first year, that maybe we cover a shorter lifespan, because after that useful life, then FC will make all the needed repairs at their cost. So there's the ability to work with that lifespan or that useful life that would mitigate some of our exposure in terms of the maintenance costs. But once again, that's not identified within this MOU. So my personal opinion is, I'd rather handle this outside of the meeting with the FC Cincinnati Foundation, and then come back to council with an MOU that is more aligned with the original understanding and something that I'm more comfortable with. Because quite frankly, I think it's a great location. I suspect that no damage will be done. But the point is, if something does happen, this is $180,000 piece of, we'll call it, equipment. And for us to assume that responsibility after one year is not something that we even understood from the start, let alone now. So that is my personal recommendation. So I'll ask council to, we can leave it at discussion, Mr. Law Director, or simply table it, whatever you prefer. But that is my recommendation, council can do as they wish.
Yeah, I don't know how you all, but I was sold that it's 100% on this foundation. They were going to, they were going to put it in, if something happened, they were going to pay for it.
That was my understanding, too.
And what, if you look under Milford obligation, what he's referring to, it pretty much said that Milford's going to pay for it.
Right.
If something happens again after one year. I'm 100% on board with table this, too.
I agree.
You know, unless someone has...
And I'll just state, you know, the stance they're taking, and I'm not saying this is wrong by any means, the stance they're taking is they're making $180,000 donation, they're eating the cost upfront. They're donating this project to the city, and they take the stance after that, that warranty expires after the first year, then it's the city's responsibility to assume those maintenance costs. It could be nothing within the useful life, or it could be something. But once again, I felt that I understood it as we have purely the minor costs, and anything that is of large cost, which is not defined, and that would be something that we'd have to define within the MOU itself as well. But that's how, there's a disconnect. So if council's okay with it, I know they don't want to kick it on, but I don't feel comfortable moving forward with it. So if we can come to an agreement, we'll put this on a July 15th council meeting and move on from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And because it's potentially a $180,000 budget item that we would have to discuss and talk about, that, you know, granted, it's probably not going to happen, but it certainly could. So you have to at least have that as a potential problem. And again, I like the idea, I don't love, you know, I'm not a soccer person, so I'm not the biggest heavy. It seems like a nice amenity, but again, I think there's too many unknowns personally. So we'll table that.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, my most favorite topic next is the ODOT Maine-Lila Avenue budget increase. I always loved budget increases.
Don't we all? All right, so I will take a trip back in history, even though it's only like 60 days. But about 60 days ago, we approved final legislation for the Maine-Lila sidewalk improvement that is facilitated through ODOT. And during that final legislation, we really scaled back the scope of work, which had a lot to do with the fact that there was right-of-way issues, and there was a good chunk of the sidewalks that were not going to be addressed because of those issues that we simply could not get around in order to meet the timeline. So we passed the legislation that reduced it, and after we passed the final legislation, which is this, we're simply following the steps that is common practice with ODOT. They sent it out to bid, I put the email, or Jackie, excuse me, put the email within the packet. The lowest bid came in at about 13, a little over 13% more. It's a little cut off, so we're missing a column. But it was about 13% more. So in order to get this completed, we need to pay an additional $80,700 towards that project to get started. I want to emphasize that, at the beginning of the year, we budgeted $750,000 for this project. It's, we budgeted 750, and then we have a grant through OKI for an amount not to exceed 750,000 or 50% of the total cost. So we did budget for this, and right now, the total cost comes out to a little under $665,000. So we're still well under what we budgeted. So we still have the funds necessary to complete this. However, because we passed the final legislation, and this is obviously above my spending limit, I'm asking council to increase that amount so we can get started on this project and keep moving. So that's where, that's why I'm coming back.
And I think also, correct my wrong, because it comes under, we had always talked about really enhancing that five-points intersection. So that would potentially still have money available that, to make that the marquee, whether it's stamped brick walkways, things of that nature, to really enhance, A, I think the safety of that crosswalk could be greatly enhanced, but that would give us that opportunity to do that shortly after in conjunction with this project. It's, you know, unfortunate that costs have risen, but, you know, do I have a motion that we amend for the $80,700, what is it?
I would just do an amount, the ordinance is written at an amount not to exceed 665,000, so that reflects the previous ordinance, as well as this additional $80,700.
Okay. Is that the way the ordinance is written? Okay.
Second. Mr. Price, you made a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Brings us to the artwork easement agreement.
Another familiar topic is the America 250 mural that the county CBB received grant funds through, or for, was to create this mural throughout the county. We've had several discussions internally, as well as with the Chamber of Commerce. We've had several discussions internally, as well as with the Chamber of Commerce and the Convention of Visitors Bureau regarding the location of the mural and the material of the mural. And based off of those conversations, what we are presenting, and my recommendation to council for approval, is we grant a mural easement for the mural to be located at Five Points Landing Park on the restroom building. Why I really like this, why I really like this proposal is because it's going to be a wrap, it's gonna be a mural wrap, and what that allows us to do is, it helps with the maintenance of it, but it also allows us to actually move it at any point. So, if, for example, we wanted to move it to the Harvest Market parking lot that we've discussed previously, under this easement agreement, we would pay for those costs associated with moving it, but I like the flexibility, because at any point we decide to alter Five Points, specifically that building, I don't want to be stuck dealing with this restriction. So, we're able to really reconfigure the easement that allowed the flexibility to move it if needed, but still has the flexibility in terms of the mural to move it, but the mural would be placed originally at Five Points, at the building that's located in the agreement itself, there's a picture of it. So, I think this is an excellent location, I think it would be a great addition to the park, I like the flexibility of it. Also, within the ordinance is the agreement to pay $10,000 towards the mural. Now, that was committed previous, prior to my time here, but I don't think it was ever formalized, so I want to get moving on that, because they're ready to start the mural and start ordering it and getting it installed, so it's sort of a two-part ordinance.
Wasn't it up to, or was it just?
Up to $10,000, not to exceed.
Right.
Yeah. I think it was a $10,000 commitment, though, so.
Oh, okay.
Any questions on that?
No. I like the idea that it can be moved.
We need a motion to draft that.
I make the motion to have the law director draft an ordinance, all right, I lost my thing here, approving the artwork easement agreement.
Second.
And do we need to add, is that
Spend up to $10,000.
The $10,000?
Yes, please.
Would you mind amending that, and then spend up to $10,000?
And spend up to $10,000.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey, I'm sorry, do we have a second on that, or two second?
I did second before he said
You all go back to remaining silent as always.
All right, that brings us to the UV bulb update
Thank you.
For the sewer plant.
Yes, very exciting project. The city of Milford, as I have expressed to council previously, received a grant for the UV bulb installation project at the wastewater treatment plant. This was a, we budgeted for it, however, our consultants actually had no idea that we were even in the running for this grant, so we missed out on congressional earmarks for this. However, we did pick up an OPWC grant for this, so this was great, and we, like I said, we budgeted for this exactly how it came out. Caked into our application was the construction admin of $55,000, so we did budget for this already. However, with this being above my spending limit, I did want to send this to council. In terms of the construction admin, they simply oversee change orders, they review the plans, you know, they're our liaison between the contractor itself, and it better facilitates the project. So, laid out is the construction administration proposal at $55,000. Once again, we did budget for it, but I want council's approval to spend it as it's over my spending limit.
And do I have a motion to draft this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to discussing, I'm gonna go out of order here, we'll get this one. Amending the moratorium for the 180-day for the adult cannabis dispensaries.
Yeah. Am I good? Okay. This is a discussion, we do have an ordinance for this, I want to discuss this with council. We originally passed this six months ago with the intent of putting a moratorium in place until it's addressed in the zoning code. We've had some challenges navigating that zoning code, and although we're on a good track, and we're expected to have this completed by the end of the year, at least to council by the end of the year, to, for consideration, I didn't want to get into the issue of passing another six months, and then we say, hey, in January, you know, we're doing the readings, and even though at that point, we would have established how we're going to view that use in certain districts, we continue to pass these moratoriums, and we can get into some issues when you continually pass these moratoriums. So, we put it at eight months to give us a little bit of a cushion. Like I said, we expect that the revised zoning code will be before council by the end of the year, if not by January. But I, we put it at eight months to give us that cushion until it's addressed in the zoning code.
Any questions?
Mr. Presiding Officer, I would also note, too, that since we've talked a little bit about legislation earlier, before the meeting started, from the representative, the House Bill, I'm sorry, the substitute House Bill 96, remember, it's part of Issue Two, it was revenue shared with the local, with the local hosts, with the local governments. That is being currently ratcheted back again. This is a volleyball and a pinball up in Columbus, so I don't know where it's gonna end up, but right now, the local host money is now down from 3.6% to 2%, if you will, or 20%, there's a 20% fund, 2% for us, and that 20% fund wouldn't come to us, it would be dispensed from Columbus to you. And so, and that sunsets after four years. So, I don't, it's not up to me to tell council how to vote, I would just be aware that people who believe that this has generated money for the individual municipality, or the individual political subdivision, if you will, that is in serious jeopardy, because right now, it's 3.6% under the current law. I highly doubt everything that I'm hearing and what's passing the General Assembly that that's gonna stay that way.
Interpreting Brian's statement, this year, our revenues were $133,000. As I've communicated to council, we've provided testimony against the previous version of the bill, because it would significantly affect our local budget. We utilize that for our school resource officer, as well as a economic development incentive to reimburse businesses for improvement. So, we did provide, on several different levels, statements or testimony towards, I guess, statements towards keeping that host revenue, so just wanted to point that out.
And we have our own lobbyists, correct, now, that we can utilize to ensure that they were, we passed out a few?
Correct. So, we've got our lobbyists working on it, we were also in the Ohio Municipal Leagues, it was in conjunction with the Ohio State University, they provided opposition towards the last version, and we made it, so apparently, I made a pretty good quote, or they, I don't know, they wanted to give us some attention, but, so we have been doing our part.
Yeah, I mean, that would be significant, there's no doubt, obviously, a good portion that, we use it for a resource officer, so it's significant, again, why they do what they do in Columbus, but again, we need to make sure that we are advocating for ourselves down here, that's for sure. All right. So, with that, is there any other questions about this ordinance? Does anyone like to entertain a motion that we draft this ordinance?
So moved. In stereo.
The 180-day moratorium on adult-use cannabis dispensaries?
Think that's an outdated one, what's the eight months?
Eight months, 246.
My apologies.
Here in front of me, I read what's in front of me. So, what is it now, it's a 240-day?
In the blue folder there, 246, I believe.
Back to 180, in fairness, you read it correctly, but we're proposing
Yes, correct.
I think the corrected ordinance, as Jackie's saying, is in that blue folder.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I haven't opened the blue folder yet.
My apologies, so, it's eight months, so whatever the equivalent is in days.
240 days, okay, gotcha. Is this a new ordinance, or is this just amending the existing?
It's extending, so, sorry not to be lawyerly, but it's
You do it well, so, yeah, okay.
For 240.
Okay, gotcha. So, are we in agreement that we're passing for 240-day? Yes, okay.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Okay. With that, I want to go ahead and talk about the Shared Resource Center for Fiscal Services.
Yes, Shared Resource Center, you'll see in the contract itself, basically, it's an organization that focuses solely on public sector finances, they do a lot of work with school districts, as well as municipalities, they offer a list of services, so as we look to improve our internal processes and procedures, we believe that they will be an excellent resource to assist with that. So, I'm simply asking for the ability to engage with them at an amount not to exceed $7,500 a month. Although I don't believe that it will exceed that, it's an hourly rate, so I wanted to ensure that I put a dollar amount within the ordinance itself.
Craig Marone, this could potentially lead to a person who would fill this permanently, correct?
Yeah, so they've got a unique stance on things, in which, if you bring in a consultant, we can use any area of finance, but if you like that consultant, you can agree to terms to hire them, you can terminate the agreement with Shared Resource Center, and you can hire that particular person to then be on your staff. So, it can serve as a Band-Aid solution, or it can serve as a long-term solution, depending upon how that situation works out.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
No.
Do I have a motion to draft, or to go, I guess it's a contract, right? That our city manager enters into a contract with Shared Resource Center for Fiscal Services, not to exceed, how much did you say?
$7,500 a month.
$7,500 a month.
Like I said, I don't think it'll come anywhere close to that, but I just wanted to put a dollar amount.
Sure.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
And I do want to really talk about the 45, Seagrave, the antique fire truck, but I want to talk real quick about House Bill 335, that Representative Schmidt was here right before, but that, one of those provisions of House Bill 335 would be a local government's ability to pass and generate local income levies, fire levies, police levies, park levies, what have you, it would really hinder that. And what she was quickly trying to share is, and I believe you said you got an email about it, that we have some sort of opposition, and let our lawmakers know that we are not in favor of them restricting our abilities to basically fund our communities as, you know, allow our residents, really, to fund our communities by passing local tax levies. So, I would like to see us, or either direct, or we don't have a, we can take a vote, or however you want to do it, but just that our lobbyist, our city manager, and anyone else, for that matter, is advocating against that provision.
So long as I have council's blessing, our lobbyist did email me today with a letter of opposition and a pretty lengthy email regarding the House Bill, I'll certainly send that along to council as an update, and provide any of that opposition, any documents we provide in opposition, I'll ensure to pass along to council as well.
Does anyone want to either make a motion that we go ahead and move forward with drafting that, or just allow him to basically advocate for us?
Just allow him?
Yeah, I would say.
Allowing him to advocate.
All right, I agree. Okay, let's talk about one of Milford's favorite topics. Oh, we'll get there. Is it, that one on my, did I skip? Oh, no, I did skip over that. Okay. All right, so let's go to Envision Stratus Plan.
Thank you. Keeping everyone on their toes, yes. Actually, let's discuss the fire engine.
We're gonna talk about the fire truck first.
Are we? Okay.
Are we?
Okay. This is something that I wanted to discuss with council, and perhaps the fire chief can come up and provide a little explanation.
I would like, I was gonna invite him up.
Present.
Can you please provide a little short summary as to the issues that the fire engine is encountering, and what the solution is to address them?
We, last year, we noted that the fire truck, which is now 80 years old, started experiencing brake issues. I think it's important to note that the 80-year-old fire truck is not the original fire truck that Seagrave built, it's the original fire truck that Seagrave built in Ohio in 1945, as well as has Chevrolet components and other manufacturers' components. The vehicle was, it's made its last run around 1980, it sat, well, it didn't sit, but it was, you know, starting to show its age. A firefighters' club, among others, help me along here, put money into restoring the truck, which was completed by the Freeman family in 2002, when it was rededicated for the purpose of being a public relations vehicle. The important part of this is that it is not just a Seagrave vehicle, it has lots of components that have been added to it. The rear axle, I believe, is a Chevrolet, for example, it would not have come out of the factory with an automatic transmission, it has an automatic transmission now, it has power steering, it wouldn't have come out of the factory that way. So, it's been highly modified from what it was produced as, to get it to the point where it could be used for the purposes that the community uses it for. We're at a point in time where there are just simply not people that we can identify who can work on, among other things, the hybrid brake system on this vehicle, and I think we can all agree that the braking is a huge part of, when you're transporting people around on it especially. But, the last few years, Sora's Towing has been doing the upkeep of it, the maintenance work and stuff like that, they helped us to try to identify a solution, and that solution lies in, basically, like we just did with a couple of ambulances, remounting the body onto a gently-used chassis, complete chassis, driveline, frame, motor, transmission, brakes, everything. And with Sora's Towing help and their contacts, we have identified a person who is, who is very well-known for doing restoration work like this. And Sora's pledged that we would provide, they would provide the chassis, the parts, a place to work on the truck if necessary, and all of the stuff, if we could come up with the funds, which are estimated to be $10,000 to $15,000 to complete the, to complete the work. We have launched a capital campaign, firefighter Charles Evans has been working behind the scenes, and we have secured quite a, quite a nice start towards that. We really are shooting for $15,000, that's, let's just be honest. 10 to 15 is an estimate, we have some improvements, such as another step on the back, that if we had a little bit of extra money, that we would go ahead and take care of that issue as well, while it's being restored. And we're simply trying to take this iconic Milford symbol, the second motorized fire truck that
Just can I add that? Yeah, the second, I mean, the significance of this truck, and if you allow me, just because I know a lot of history of this truck. The significance of this truck in Milford, I think, goes well and beyond that we use it in parades and things like that. I mean, it was such an important part of Milford's history, and we have utilized it time and time again from a community standard. It's a very unique piece of equipment that we have at our disposal that, not just from the fire department's standpoint, but I think the community as a whole. I just had a gentleman who's now in the fire service tell me a story that when he was eight years old, I took him on his first ever fire truck ride on that truck. And it has lasting, you know, impression. So, A, he made me feel really old, but that's, you know, but that alone. But the significance of this truck and the nuances and what it does, I think it's important that counsel understands that. And where we're going with this, and I believe the city managers even spoke to the mayor already about really the temperature of counsel, that if we are able and willing to throw in some money towards this.
That is correct. I wanted to bring this before counsel, not necessarily as a commitment, but just as a discussion. I did talk to the mayor, I wasn't able to talk to Christopher about this, but I did, Mr. Parrish, I did talk to the mayor and I just, I believe it's a community asset. I think we utilize it as a city for events and so forth. And, you know, no one has really reached out to us as a city to ask for funds, but once again, I do believe this is an asset for us. I do believe we utilize it. And if there was something that we could give, and I, once again, I'm not saying we've, a dollar amount necessarily, but I did want to run that by counsel. You said the last time it ran was nineteen forties and you were driving it, is that?
No, nineteen eighty.
Oh, sorry.
I did drive, but in fairness, right before I got on, they just retired in nineteen eighty. But I did make a fire run on it as a reserve apparatus in nineteen eighty. And then before they redid it, it was a five-speed transmission with no power steering. It was, I mean, we did it in parades and I might have bonked a few people's heads when I popped the clutch a few times when we were going up hills and things like that. But Benjamin, nineteen eighty, not nineteen forty. And besides that, it was nineteen forty-five when it was built.
Oh, I was really off, my apologies. Reset from the record.
The replaced axle holder than Mr. Gunderson.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, here it comes. Come on, let me add my little fame here.
I think the chief can attest. It, and throughout the county, throughout the, you know, the ability to utilize that, not just as a PR, but as a true symbol of the significance and the length and duration of this department to its citizens, to the city itself, I think transcends anything else. And it really is a symbol of what this community is. And just to be able to maintain that, again, we as counsel have utilized it. I wasn't there, but you had to sit in the back of pickup trucks instead of that fire truck, which isn't as cool for the, for lack of a better, you know. So again, I can't tell you the thousands of kids that we've transported over the years and let alone the community draw it does for our business community during hometown holidays.
Brad will tell you that when it, there are people waiting for it when it arrives in the morning on Friday and on Saturday.
Start to finish.
And I personally have had situations to your, to your remarks earlier, Presiding Officer, that there's one family in particular, I've just gotten very lucky to hit them the same, hit on the same time when I've taken my shift driving it. They, one of the two parents are Milford-born and raised, they moved out of state, but they always come back home for Thanksgiving, and they have pictures of their kids, you know, growing up.
So tell me again, you said the capital campaign is, that seems extremely low. I assume that's because Sora's is doing the bulk of the work, but around fifteen thousand, you said, is the capital?
Yeah, we're, we're shooting for fifteen thousand. The estimate to do the labor is ten to fifteen thousand. I'm sure we're getting quite a discount on that. Sora's is covering all of the stuff part of it. And our goal is that, in addition to doing the remount, we use that word, remount, and a couple of other improvements, step issues and whatever, is that anything that's over top of that, we're just going to simply put in a fund similar to we have for Santa Sunday, and we'll draw on that fund when we need to replace stuff in the future on it.
Has this project started already?
No, they're estimating September.
September, okay.
I wanted, I wanted to have time to raise the, raise the money. And, you know, we, obviously, the community fire department didn't budget for it. It's well beyond what the club's capabilities is. I will tell you that the pledges and actual donations, which I'm not quite ready to share names and whatever, I want that to be a total list, but they've been very generous to this point in time. There's a significant commitment to keeping this vehicle operating from, from businesses and individuals that have, that are, and this doesn't include anything related to the club, the community fire department or the city. So.
And Chief, if anyone from the public wanted to contribute, where, how would they go about doing that?
Well, my last name is spelled B-A-I-R-D. No, it's, the checks, check can be made to Milford Community Fire Department. Or if you call the station, five-one-three-eight-three-one-seven-seven-seven and ask for me during the day, during the week. We actually can do, we can do Venmo and a couple of other different electronic transfer means as well, stuff we use during the festival season, so we can take money electronically.
Fire department or the club, do you actually run this?
Well, we're going to run it through the club.
Okay.
Just because it keeps.
That's where the donation would technically go, correct?
And I assume that's a five-one-C-three?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
So, well, please keep us informed. I personally would like, you know.
Can you update us next month?
Absolutely.
Because we definitely.
Yeah, I think we can, you know, discuss in minutes.
We're moving fine here, so.
It's an important part of our community.
Yep.
I think, you know, it's a huge part of the history, quite frankly. It's, it's a symbol of Milford. Was it the recent article in Islands Magazine of all things related to, I think the chamber had some input in that article. Picture was fire truck. That was one of the pictures they used in the article. So just, I feel like that this has value beyond Milford Community Fire Department. This is the city's, this is the city's vehicle, this is the residence, the symbol of our city and belongs to the residents. And we, I'm okay with the fact that we're all kind of coming together to make it happen. The truck needs to last another eighty years, simple as that.
Agree.
Thank you, Chief. I gave him zero heads up, he was going to be called to duty, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. I purposely skipped over this, save the best for last, right?
That's right, that's what they say.
The Envision Strategy Plan.
Thank you. I have previously provided this in counsel's packet for conversation. The last time we discussed this, there was a state grant that was available to help with strategic plans and so forth. I don't believe we're going to be getting that. I know it's closed now, I haven't heard anything. Nonetheless, I think this is an extremely important item to consider. And this is, once again, or I shouldn't say once again, this is, again, only a discussion. If counsel feels comfortable moving forward in any way, then we'll bring this to, at the earliest the July meeting. But I really wanted to discuss with the counsel. You know, we have since, really even my interview process, discussed the need for an updated comprehensive plan and an update on what our vision is as a community. But really, in terms of moving forward into that comprehensive plan, I think it'd be important to really focus in on economic development as it relates to five really key areas for us. Our downtown, our Main Street and Lila corridor, the Parkway, Milford Parkway off of two-seventy-five, as well as the very little piece of land that we hold across the river or properties that are part of the city that are on the other side of the river. And I really want to focus on what strategies do we as a city want to implement or what projects, what uses do we want to see in those particular areas? And why that's important for someone like me and my position is it's a guiding document. This is counsel telling me, hey, this is what we would like to see. This is us collaboratively working together to determine this is what we want to see in that area. This is, this is how we grow as a municipality. You know, maybe we don't want to focus so much on this particular thing in one area, but rather we can shift it down to another area. And this is, this is a strategic document, but a guiding document for us internally to follow. And, you know, this doesn't happen overnight. Those five key areas are key areas for a reason. I think that those are our core business districts. I think all of the five key areas have areas of opportunity. And as we're working through the zoning code, as we look to compound this into a strategic plan, assuming counsel agrees, this is really the sort of setting that foundation. So I wanted to bring this to counsel. Once again, I have presented this to counsel to discuss it, but this is something I really want to jump on, start moving in this direction. How I ended on Envision is, Envision has been utilized across the state and has been utilized with a lot of the mentors that I have in the field. They're currently working on Miami Township's Economic Development Strategy Plan, and they've done several other ones that I've discussed with the company and other peers in the field. They're known to be very strategic, they're known to think outside the box. They've got government people, former city managers, as well as people that focus more on the strategy that work together to create that plan. So, once again, this is me discussing with counsel. This is one proposal. There's, of course, the opportunity to explore other ones. I don't have any other ones in mind. Certainly, there's other companies that do this for a living and I could easily get other proposals, but I feel very confident with this company, with the people that would be completing the plan. And I feel very confident and with the focus areas, as I'm the one that created them. But I think it's well laid out, I think it's very reasonable in terms of the price. And, you know, a good salesman sells the product, a great salesman sells the outcome. Once again, this establishes that vision, a guiding document for us to, to work from and as we continue to seek projects and meet with people that want to invest in the community, this is something that we can leverage as we look to, you know, tackle some of those projects.
Any other questions? I think that this is one of those things as we move forward that whether we use this company or one similar to it, I think we all benefit from it. I think it gives us some great insight because where our focus has been, and we can be consistent, I believe, in making our judgment. So from here, you will, if anyone has any questions, I guess, give it to the city manager, and then I guess your goal would be to bring this back by July, does that give you enough time or whatever?
Yeah, this absolutely gives me enough time. If we're comfortable moving forward with this one, if it's to seek other options, then, you know, maybe I might push that back depending upon the communication and how quickly that's received. But, you know, once again, as I've discussed with the mayor, for example, I might have a vision, but that doesn't mean counsel shares that vision, that doesn't mean the community shares that vision. So it is important to collaborate amongst all of us stakeholders to determine what that vision is. So that's why this is so important. So that's, that's my concluding comments.
All right, and then, any other questions on that?
No.
If I could bring Chief Baird back up to the podium, because he loves standing at the podium.
Hey, I want to go back to the fire truck just for a second. I want to, in trying to organize my disorganized thoughts, I want to make a statement about the Sora family. I told you they've been working on the truck the last few years doing the maintenance or whatever. This idea originated with John Sora and his family. He said, look, here's what I want to do to fix this problem. We got to get this truck back to running for the community. I mean, they just owned it from the word go. And he said, if you can come up with some money to help, great. And so I did not do a good enough job of acknowledging the fact that our family is going to put a lot of money into this vehicle.
I tried to give you that softball.
I know. Sometimes I don't. But anyway, I just want to, to you and the audience, I just wanted to say, you know, look, this originated with, here's what I want to do to fix the prob, here's what our family wants to do to fix the problem and get this truck back in business. And we'll figure out the rest of it later, kind of a thing. So I just want to make that.
I think that's, Johnny Sora and family have just been such an incredible advocate. And.
Right, I understand.
That we're even giving him any. Like to do it, get it done. And they're not looking for the accolades, they're not looking, but they are an impressive family.
A lot of community business help take care of the community fire.
Well, thanks for coming back up.
Thank you.
The only comment I had that I, we had discussed some time ago before Wallace Avenue about doing a speed study. I brought, I heard from three residents, maybe you could weigh in on this, not to interrupt. They had a hit skip on South Milford Road that has been unresolved. But since that time, I've heard from three different residents on South Milford Road complaining about speeding because it kind of brought it to light. Now, would you?
From the flock camera on South Milford. Ohio changed the license plate law a few years ago. Maybe. Road, we would have. But that is one of the flock cameras. All they have to do is reach out. We'll. Hit those.
Well, I think it just, with the nicer weather, people traversing back and forth through that area, there is no sidewalks, whether there are people walking from retreats. Heard it from, I heard it from non-residents who happened to be at a retreat and were amazed on the speed. And when I informed them that it's twenty-five miles an hour, they quickly told me that they believed that they were. And thanks for coming up and filling. With the speed study on Wallace, which I think might have got tabled because you can't speed on Wallace Avenue right now. It's an absolute mess. But just that we add that to, they're looking at that of, you know. I'm a firm believer in being an advocate if it's warranted. And again, that's where I think a speed study would come up for any other assistance, you know.
I don't disagree, at all.
Thank you. Okay. That was a lot. Okay, so I need a motion to close the committee as a whole.
So moved.
Second.
And I'll, before she did, I mentioned to our final law director, when we do these changes, we'll be able to just have all those in favor say aye instead of doing this voice vote, which would streamline some of this as we move forward. So anyway, that's one of the good things we can change.
Certainly on, you know, approving the agenda.
Yeah, the minor stuff, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, sorry, Jackie, I took your, I stole your thunder.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Cooper? Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Some ordinances and may I turn this over to you, our fine parliamentarian?
Wow.
Yeah.
Call a lot worse.
Yeah.
By this body. Pay attention.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm not going to read nominated provision else, but. Oh, ordinance, number twenty-five dash three-six-two. In order. ordinance, ordinance number 25-362, an ordinance approving Milford, Ohio, and declaring an emergency, whereas the general and permanent is Milford, Ohio, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Milford, Ohio, sitting arrangement and 15th, 2020, March 8, as listed in the and adopted as printed in the March 2025 replacement pages to the codified ordinances so as to achieve uniformity of style and classification. A copy of such replacement pages are attached to this ordinance and incorporated as part hereof. Section 2, the following of the Traffic and General Offenses Code hereby approved and adopted so as to conform to the Ohio General Assembly over 2023 replacement. Again, those are listed here in section 2. On to section 3. This ordinance is deemed and declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health and safety, and for the further reason that it is necessary to immediately update the Milford codified ordinances and facilitate administration and daily operation, and also to avoid practical and legal entanglements.
Yes, I want to make a motion. Suspend the rules and reby title only.
Second.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-362, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Milford, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-363, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with, oh, I beg your pardon. Thank you.
I tried to stop you.
I know. I mean, it's not, it's paying, I thought you were waving another finger at me, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 25, sorry. Ordinance, are we doing, we are doing 364. All right. Thank you. All ordinance, thank you. Seriously, thank you. Ordinance number 25-364, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter the LPA Federal ODOT LET Project Agreement with ODOT. Whereas the Ohio Department of Transportation has bid up the Maine and Lila sidewalk improvement project and the lowest bid came back at 12% higher than the amount provided in the state estimate. Whereas in order to complete this project, the city must contribute an amount to exceed 665,000 as a 50% match for the project. Whereas the total amounts in thousand plus the amount 5-350 City of Milford, Ohio, to obtain funding by the LPA ODOT and any other documents necessary to obtain such funding for such improvements. The terms and conditions of this agreement are attached and incorporated herein by reference pursuant to and in accordance with section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter, section 2 under and in accordance this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage
Motion to
only. Second.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-364, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into the LPA Federal ODOT LET Project Agreement with ODOT.
Motion to
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Thank you. Ordinance number 25-365, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to grant a mural easement to the Claremont County Convention and Visitors Bureau at Five Points Landing Park. Whereas in conjunction with the America 250 Celebration, the Claremont County Convention and Visitors Bureau receive grants funds to provide murals in communities throughout Claremont County aligning with the America 250 vision, mission rather, and local history. Whereas the City of Milford grants the Claremont County Convention and Visitors Bureau a mural easement for said mural to be placed in Five Points Landing on the restroom building. Whereas the City of Milford will contribute not to exceed $10,000 for said mural with the rest of the cost being covered by funds obtained through the Claremont County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of Municipalities of Milford, Ohio, section 1. The Council of the City of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into a mural easement agreement with Claremont County Convention and Visitors Bureau. The attached agreement is fully incorporated by reverence under and in accordance with section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter, section 2, under and in accordance with sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter. This ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and reby title only?
Second.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-365, to the city manager to grant a mural easement to the Claremont County Convention and Visitors Bureau at Five Points Landing Park.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25, an ordinance authorized into a construction administration agreement with Branstad or Carroll, Inc. for construction administration services related to the wastewater UV bulb installation project. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of Municipalities of Milford, Ohio, section 1. The Council of the Milford, the City of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter disinfectant system treatment plan. The city manager is further authorized on any and all documents appropriate for obtaining assistance incorporated by reference under and become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Only.
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-366, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a construction administration agreement with Branstad or Carroll, Inc. for construction administration services related to the wastewater UV bulb installation project.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-367, an ordinance imposing an additional 240-day moratorium on adult-use cannabis dispensaries or businesses and prohibiting marijuana cultivators and processors within the City of Milford. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of Municipalities of Milford, Ohio. Whereas by ordinance numbers 24-301 and 25-331, city council established 180-day moratoria prohibiting the authorization or establishment of any adult-use cannabis dispensaries or operation within the City of Milford, including but not limited to adult-use cannabis processors, cultivators or dispensaries. And whereas for the duration of this two 100-day moratoria, 180-day moratoria, try that quickly. Whereas for the duration of this two 180-day moratoria, the city did not take any action to authorize or to establish any adult-use cannabis business or operation within the City of Milford, including but not limited to adult-use cannabis processors, cultivators or dispensaries. And whereas by ordinance number 24-303, city council clarified that this moratorium did not apply to Cascade Southern Ohio LLC's location in the city at 401 Rivers Edge Drive. And whereas for the reasons set forth in ordinance numbers 24-301 and 25-331, city council extends the 180-day moratorium in ordinance number 25-331 for another 240 days from the date of the passage of this ordinance. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of Municipalities of Milford, Ohio, section 1. For the reasons set forth in ordinance numbers 24-301 and 25-331, city council extends the moratorium imposed by ordinance 25-331 for another 240 days from the date of passage of this ordinance. This moratorium shall not apply to Cascade Southern LLC's, Southern Ohio LLC's location in the city at 401 Rivers Edge Drive. Pursuant to and in accordance with sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and reby title only?
Second.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-367, an ordinance imposing an additional 240-day moratorium on adult-use cannabis dispensaries or businesses and prohibiting as Mel Blanc used to say, that's all folks. Help. 25, yeah, right. Agreement with Shared Resource Center. It's 12.05 and 12.0
Second.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance, sorry. Ordinance number 25-368, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a consultant agreement with Shared Resource Center, sorry.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Presiding Officer, just back to the sound ordinance, I wanted to make it clear that that 737 or 739 that Mr. Gunderson helpfully pointed out to me, that is only as to amplified sound. That is not as to all noise. That only applies to the certain times that it applies. There are other ordinances. You can look at them if you want to discuss them further under 1185 of our code that may or may not apply depending on what you do. So that's, I just wanted to give you that additional amplification, pun intended, to decide what council wanted to do in that regard. Thank you.
I don't have a good solution. I don't have a good answer. I just know it's something that comes up. And I know there are a few residents who time and time again have been adversely affected by the sound. So I just think that it warrants just additional consideration and look at it, that's all. We've got another question, old business.
So I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session at the conclusion of tonight's agenda pursuant to section 3.05.1 of the Milford City Charter for the sole purpose of the consideration of the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official licensee, official licensee or regulated individual, unless the public employee, official licensee or regulated individual request a public hearing, we will be returning to regular session at the conclusion of the executive session for the sole purpose of adjoining for the evening.
Second.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
We will be headed out and thank everyone again, all the audience. Appreciate you all showing up here tonight. I'd be remiss if I didn't wish my wife a very happy birthday. This is how she got to spend her birthday. I'm sure she's watching the Reds game instead of here, but you know, other than that. So thank you. We will not be back.